All right, thank you. It's 5:15, our regular scheduled meeting, and you will start off with our Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Rojestein, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when they are needed, under our individual and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Rojestein. Call, let's see, roll call, look, everybody's here. Nice, like that. This first thing we're going to do is a citizen comment request. It's to provide a three-minute time for, in any council matter. We don't have any hearing items, so if you want to address the council, we just ask you to come up and state your name and address, and you can talk about anything you like for three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Which one do I speak into? Either or?
I think that one.
This one?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is William Boyd. I live in 511 First Street here in Wenatchee. I'm the operational manager of the cafe Wenatchee Natural Foods. I've been sent here because I'm your guys' new liaison from the 12th LD. I'm also a precinct committee officer, a state committee member who serves on the advocacy committee for the state of Washington, and now also the first vice chair of the Chelan County Democrats. So, if you guys need me, I'm down at the cafe, or you can just get in touch with the Democrats, but I'm your guys' new liaison.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why don't you send an email to us, and then you can get this sent to all of us?
Yes, yes, I can do that.
Your contact information, if you do that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks for coming. Well, that wasn't three minutes, so who else do we got?
Hello, my name is Kirsten French, 134 Thorburn Lane, Malaga, Washington, and this is my first Wenatchee City Council meeting. So, I wanted to stand up today because I just finished the Parent Leader Teacher, or Parent Leadership Teaching Institute, and it has taught me to be more involved in my community, particularly in government and how it interacts with its people. So, I wanted to stand up, give her my fear, say hello, and then also remind you, I just spent the last year serving on the Malaga Coliseum Community Council, and though I'm in an area that isn't able to vote for you, what I have learned is that your decisions, your participation in different committees within the county really affect us in Malaga. So, this is me. My daughter Colette is coloring over there, and I want to remind you that though this is Wenatchee, and people like me don't get to vote for you, you greatly impact us in greater Wenatchee, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll go to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor Rudneck &amp; Sons LLC for the Complete Streets Sidewalks Project, City Project 2304, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Uer, and a second by Councilmember Hornby, for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor Rudneck &amp; Sons Limited Liability Corporation for the Complete Streets Sidewalks Project, City Project 2304, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, it's time for a presentation, which I think some of you are here for. Councilmember Uer, do you have that?
Yes, I do. Proclamation for the Leadership Institute of NCW bilingual training program through curriculum developed by the nationally renowned Parent Leadership Training Institute seeks to empower community leaders from diverse backgrounds to advocate effectively for their children, themselves, and their communities, and whereas, the Leadership Institute of NCW equips community leaders with the civic skills, knowledge, and opportunities to build meaningful connections between themselves, government, and community, to guide, evaluate, and advocate for policies, practices, and programs that positively impact families and communities, and to bring about needed change, and whereas, the first graduates of the Leadership Institute of NCW are confident community leaders who build relationships, identify community challenges, engage in community projects, facilitate system change via civic engagement, and partner with others to build stronger communities where all children and families can thrive, and whereas, the Leadership Institute of NCW and its first graduates are recognized for the role they will play now and in the coming years to help our region. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, in honor of the 2025 graduating class of the Leadership Institute of NCW, hereby proclaim February 27, 2025, as Leadership Institute of NCW Day, and witness whereof, I have caused the seal of City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 27th day of February 2025. Mike Poyer, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Uer. Do we have a summer?
Thank you so much. I do, yeah.
We'll take this one here.
I'm live. Wanted to thank council members for honoring the investment of these leaders who are graduating from the Leadership Institute today. Thank you so much, Mayor, too, for your time in honoring these individuals. I wanted to note that we have more than two dozen organizations that were part of bringing the Leadership Institute of North Central Washington to life. It's rooted in the important work of Our Value, Our Future, which we all know, love, and care about, and have been invested in. OVOF just celebrated its 10th anniversary, so in other words, you could say this work is 10 years in the making. Wanted to acknowledge the Community Foundation of North Central Washington for its leadership as the site coordinator, and then bringing other funders, like Thriving Together, to the table, plus all the two dozen organizations, nonprofits, agencies, that brought this to life. I really shouldn't have the mic right now, I've just been the behind-the-scenes person, so I'd like to turn it over to two of our community leaders who have a message for council today, so thank you so much for having us. Allison Podlick and Stacy Willoughby are the two that you'll be hearing from.
Thank you so much. Should we, we're facing this way, correct? Okay.
That way, because I can't reach those microphones. Okay, yes.
Good evening. Estimado Consejo Municipal de Wenatchee, nosotros, la primer grupo de North Central Washington Leadership Institute, les escribimos con profundo agradecimiento por su reconocimiento a nuestros esfuerzos a través de una proclamación en nuestro honor. Eso resuelve refleja el compromiso de la ciudad con el fomento del liderazgo impulsando por la comunidad. Valoramos enormemente este reconocimiento y que demuestra el deseo de Wenatchee de apoyar y cultivar el liderazgo en todos los niveles. Sin embargo, el verdadero liderazgo no solo implica celebrar logros sino también comprometerse con la rendición de cuentas, especialmente cuando se trata de la seguridad y el bienestar de todos los miembros de la comunidad.
Dear Wenatchee City Council, we, the first cohort of the NCW Leadership Institute, are writing to you with deep appreciation for your recognition of our efforts through a proclamation in our honor. This gesture speaks to the city's commitment to fostering community-driven leadership. We truly value this recognition as it reflects Wenatchee's desire to support and cultivate leadership at all levels. However, true leadership requires not only the celebration of achievements, but also commitment to accountability, especially when it concerns the safety and well-being of all community members.
El 28 de abril de 2017, la ciudad de Wenatchee aprobó su resolución de bienvenida que comienza declarando que la ciudad de Wenatchee está comprometida a ser una ciudad acogedora y a crear una comunidad en la que todos se sienten bienvenidos, seguros y capaces de participar plenamente en la vida económica y social de la ciudad. Les escribimos hoy para pedirles que honoren ese compromiso.
On April 28, 2017, the city of Wenatchee passed its welcoming resolution, which begins by declaring that the city of Wenatchee is committed to being a welcoming city and creating a community where all feel welcomed, safe, and able to fully participate in and contribute to our city's economic and social life. We write to you today to ask that you honor that commitment.
Como saben, en el sótano del edificio donde se encuentra en el ayuntamiento, hay una oficina del Departamento de Seguridad Nacional, the ICE. Para muchos miembros de la comunidad, especialmente los inmigrantes, la presencia del ICE en este espacio genera un ambiente que se sienta poco ajenor, ajenor, that one's hard, ajenor e inseguro. Este incluye a los participantes de nuestra grupo de Leadership Institute, varios de los cuales provenían de familias inmigrantes.
As you may know, there is a Department of Homeland Security, Immigration, and Customs Enforcement office in the basement of this building, that house, of the same building that houses City Hall. For many community members, particularly immigrants, the presence of ICE in this space creates an environment that feels unwelcoming and unsafe. This includes participants in the Leadership Institute, several of whom come from immigrant backgrounds.
Como líderes emergentes, muchos de nosotros somos prueba viviente de que la retórica danina que a menudo se difunda sobre los inmigrantes es infundida, infundada, y injusta. Los inmigrantes no son criminales, son personas que se preocupan profundamente por sus familias, vecinos, y comunidades. La presencia de ICE en el mismo edificio que el ayuntamiento crea un clima de temor. Razón por la cual muchos de nosotros, que podríamos haber asistido a la reunión de esta noche, decidimos no hacerlo, en solidaridad con nuestros compañeros que no se sienten
As emerging leaders, many of us are living proof that the harmful rhetoric often spread about immigrants is unfounded and unjust. Immigrants are not criminals, they're individuals who care deeply about their families, neighbors, and communities. The presence of ICE in the building, in the same building as City Hall, creates a climate of fear, which is why many of us, actually most of us, who could have attended tonight's meeting chose not to, in solidarity with our peers who feel unsafe.
El ayuntamiento es un espacio donde las familias agudan a pagar facturas de servicios, solicitar permisos para parques, y realizar otros trámites importantes. También es un lugar donde los niños disfrutan del área de juegos en el segundo piso. Como pueden, como pueden las familias inmigrantes y los niños sentirse seguros y bienvenidos cuando ICE opera en el sótano del mismo edificio donde se supone deber servir, como un espacio público para todos.
City Hall serves as a space where families come to pay utility bills, request park permits, and navigate other important matters. Children, too, come to enjoy the indoor playground on the second floor. How could immigrant families and children feel safe and welcomed when ICE operates in the basement of the very building that is supposed to serve as a public space for all?
Si bien entendemos que ICE tiene un contrato de arrendamiento con Localtel. Como representantes electos de esta comunidad, les pedimos que tomen medidas para garantizar que el ayuntamiento sigue siendo un lugar seguro y acogedor para todos los residentes de Wenatchee. Cuando la ciudad se mudó a este edificio, defensores de la comunidad, incluido miembros del ex consejo asesor de diversidad de la ciudad de Wenatchee, advirtieron el Consejo Municipal sobre el impacto negativo que eso tendría en los miembros de la comunidad. A pesar de estas preocupaciones, se tomó la decisión de proceder con la nueva ubicación.
While we understand that ICE's leases with Localtel, as elected representatives of this community, we ask that you take action to ensure that City Hall remains a safe and welcoming place for all Wenatchee residents. When the city moved into the building, community advocates, including members of the former City of Wenatchee Diversity Advisory Council, warned the city council of the negative impact this would have on immigrant community members. Despite these concerns, the decision was made to proceed with the new location.
Les pedimos que abogan firmemente por la eliminación del ICE del edificio, o si es necesario, reconsideran reubicar el ayuntamiento en un lugar más accesible e inclusivo. Gracias por su atención a este importante asunto. Atentamente, los egresados del Northwest, North Central Washington Leadership Institute.
We ask that you strongly advocate for the removal of ICE from the building, or if necessary, consider relocating City Hall to a more accessible and inclusive location. Thank you for attention to this important matter. Sincerely, NCW Leadership Institute alumni.
And also thank you for declaring today Leadership Day, and we really appreciate the support.
Well, you showed your leadership today, right? So, it's kind of interesting. I grew up Longview, Washington, and came here, I'm going to tell a short story. So, one of my friends, I used to go down to his house, he actually literally lived across the tracks, and that's kind of close where I grew up, right over here. And at 12 years old, I went into his house, and I go to his house every day, his mom would make me dinner, and so, the end result is, she made me tacos one day, and it was interesting, I'm going to get to a point here, but she made me tacos one day, and then my buddy went eat the hot sauce, I love hot sauce, it just happens, I like hot sauce, so I asked him, I says, "Why don't you eat the hot sauce?", and he goes, "I don't like hot sauce", and I said, "Well, I thought all Mexicans liked hot sauce." He came over, hit me in the face, had a little fight, his mom didn't, his mom and dad didn't speak any English, and then ended up, she's yelling at her son, you know, yelling at his son, and saying, "What, you know, what, do that", and then he spoke in Spanish, told his mom what I said, and she just, I just remember going like this, and basically, shame on me, right? And he ended up being my best man at my wedding, I've been married 38 years, so you know where that relationship probably went. Shame on me. So, what's going on now is tough, right? Tough for our community. So, there's no easy answer, and I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad we do want to make it safe, we are looking at it, it is heavily on our hearts. We're trying to figure out what we can do, which is maybe not a lot, to be honest with you, the federal government, we can't do much about it. But we are trying to make strides, and we talked to, like, the billing department, we're trying, we really are trying. We talked to our billing department and said, "Hey, look, when somebody calls, make sure you let them know. If somebody walks in, you know what, you can just make sure you make your payment, just call us in, we'll help you, we'll guide you through more and more and more." We're trying, we're trying little things, we're trying little things. Some of my, some of my friends, some of my friends, I don't look at Latino or Mexican, I just, some of my friends, it's an embarrassment for me that I have to tell my friends, "Make sure you have your green card." "Well, I grew up with you, Mike, why would I have a green card?" I go, "I don't know how this works." And what a shame that I have to express that, and I'm sorry for our community that has to go through this. So, thank you again, thanks for showing your leadership, that was a great letter that you guys presented to us.
We have to go to our graduation, so we're leaving, but you are all invited to stop by if you want a little party after, we're going till 7:30. Thank you so much for your time and attention today.
I just had to compliment Allison's beautiful Spanish, because I grew up with her as a Latina-only Spanish-speaking daughter of parents, so, so proud to hear you show your español, chica, buen trabajo.
She did a beautiful job.
Okay, we go to our action items. What do we have first? Oh, city administrator.
Good evening, City Council, Laura Gloria, City Administrator. The item before you is a Rivercom 2025 amended and restated interlocal cooperative agreement. This is very similar to the agreement that was presented to you all a couple months back. In fact, I don't know that there are any additional changes, I think there's just been some different processes at the board and with other municipalities. I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, generally, it's in the same form as the, as last, which is a change to the board is the biggest impact.
So, I'll just interject just for a minute, so the board, what happened, we didn't bring it to you before, when it had a board change on it, and I know Councilmember Hornby has a little bit of input on this, too. So, the board part of this has actually got approved, because it only need three, East Wenatchee, Chelan County, and Douglas County approved it, and it only needed three, so I didn't bring it to you, because that part got approved. So, when you're looking at this one here, and Councilmember Hornby, hopefully you have some comments or insight on this, too. So, this is a lot of cleaning up, but it doesn't affect how the board, the board has already got approved, but not by you guys, but it got, it's approved anyway.
Essentially, we were outvoted for the City of Wenatchee, so now there's a five-person Mixed feelings about this, but I thought four was the appropriate ones, the ones that are spending the money into Rivercom and keeping it focused on the mission statement. I hope they stay focused on the mission statement of providing 24/7, 365 call center, and don't spend money on other things that are outside of the mission statement.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the Rivercom 2025 amended and restated interlocal cooperative agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rojestein, and a second by Councilmember Hornby, for City Council to approve the Rivercom 2025 amended and restated interlocal cooperative agreement. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Wait, this happened earlier today.
It did. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Little bit of a bait and switch, instead of Jake Luing, you have Zach Horton, project engineer, Public Works Department, instead. Let me get my notes out here. I'm here tonight to request a motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator to execute the construction and maintenance agreements between the City of Wenatchee and BNSF for the Miller Street and McKittrick Street grade separations to be constructed as part of the Confluence Parkway Phase 1 project, City Project Number 2201.1. Back in December, we brought a similar type of agreement to you for the pedestrian bridge project. This agreement covers our purchase of real property interests, like temporary construction easements, permanent easements for the two structures we're building. It covers our construction, BNSF's construction costs related to building those structures, namely, flagging for worker protection and their installation of a temporary shoe fly to detour mainline traffic to build the underpass structure, and it also covers the maintenance of the structures after they're built. At the end of the project, we're going to own both of these structures, so this really just outlines everything from cradle to grave of our relationship with BNSF, and helps us get these structures built. The costs related to the property interests I mentioned are about half a million dollars, it's listed in your agenda report there, and the construction cost total around $6.7 million. Those are estimated costs, it's basically a time and materials contract, so that's liable to increase, but we're carrying contingency for the, for the event that that might happen. And those costs, any contingency that's unused can be recovered early on in the project, most of those expenses will be incurred upfront before we open those structures to traffic. And with that, I'll open it to any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions, just a comment. Well done, this was a heavy lift, I'm happy to read this motion. Your Honor, with that, I'll make a motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator to execute the construction and maintenance agreement between the City of Wenatchee and BNSF for the Miller Street and McKittrick Street grade separation to be constructed as part of the Confluence Parkway Phase 1 project, City Project Number 2201.1.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby, and a second by Councilmember Uer, for City Council to authorize the city administrator to execute the construction and maintenance agreements between the City of Wenatchee and BNSF for the Miller Street and McKittrick Street grade separations to be constructed as part of the Confluence Parkway Phase 1 project, City Project Number 2201.1. Any other discussion or comments?
Credit where credit is due, Jake Luing and Tom really got this to where it is. I'm just the face.
Well, the face and the finish, you'll be the face and the finish on this, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess for the benefit of members of council that weren't at the Finance Committee, as we move on to this next step with Confluence Parkway Phase 1, I'll be transitioning into a project management role, assuming the duties that Jake has been doing up to date. So, you'll be seeing more of me, I guess, is what I'm letting you know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Alyssa Schaefer, Facilities Manager with the Public Works Department. I'm here this evening to present for your consideration change order number eight to the contract with Abshire Construction Company for the Wenatchee Convention Center Expansion Project, City Project 2212. My last appearance was in December, at that time, or since that time, we have spent $90,071.92 and changes per our purchasing policy. Work under this change order number eight will surpass the $100,000 threshold, and is presented to you for your approval. This change order specifically addressed residual adhesives that were left behind from the wall protection on the existing walls within the Fuji Gala renovation area. The alternatives were to remove and replace the drywall or to cover it up. The decision to leave the existing material in place and cover the areas with a thin sheet of drywall was the low-cost, most time-saving alternative. We've made it to the halfway mark for the project, and we are currently sitting under 1.7% in contingency. A brief project update, work in the expansion portion of the project continues with roof installation nearing completion. Fireproofing of the structure is currently underway, and mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire sprinkler systems are being roughed in. Framers are working to enclose the building, and the air weather barrier subcontractors and bricklayers will start in a couple weeks, so will start to take shape on the exterior. But the most exciting news is the work in the Fuji Gala areas is now complete, and the convention center will be able to utilize it for the first time for the Special Olympics this weekend, so we made it. A very huge thank you to Abshire Construction Company and ALSC Architects for their hard work and dedication to get this project through this critical phase so that we could be ready for operations this weekend, so, yay. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
You make us look good.
Second.
So, it's happened, I see Mayor Koontz, I want to say, three or four months, you know, not too often, actually, and I saw him today, paying my taxes, and he said, "Boy, Alyssa's always been incredible." Alyssa's always been incredible. So, anyway.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Your Honor, I will recuse myself on this item.
Okay, thank you. Noted.
Can't wait to see it. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve Change Order Number Eight with Abshire Construction Company and authorize the City Administrator's signature.
Second. Been a motion by Councilmember Osteen and seconded by Councilmember Cuevas for City Council to approve Change Order Number Eight with Abshire Construction Company and authorize the City Administrator's signature. Any other comments or discussion?
Has Finance seen this change order? No?
I don't believe they have. But based off of the amount, I don't know that it really qualified.
Okay.
And it's within, it is within the project budget, and so it's perfect. All budget authority is cleared, so it didn't necessarily have to go to Finance Committee.
Thank you.
I did run it by Brad before.
Just passed the buck. There you go. I just gave you a compliment, and then you just throw him.
I know. I threw my other pot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Project Engineer Nicole.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nicole Brockwell, Project Engineer for our Public Works Department, here this evening on behalf of our South End Bike Ped Access Bridges Project, and to request a motion for the City Council to authorize the City Administrator to execute the construction agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Wash Dot for improvements to be constructed within state right-of-way as part of the project. So, majority of our improvements on the east side are all within state right-of-way, and so this is a pretty standard agreement. It just documents that we agreed to follow all of Wash Dot's standards, that we incorporate them in the review process for material documentation. It does cover some, like, future maintenance portions, which is why some of the exhibits to this, like, to this specific agreement include all of the documents stating that this is actually City of East Wenatchee. It's within the City of East Wenatchee's kind of jurisdiction, and so there's several agreements in here that's just kind of clear that we're doing the construction for the project, and we'll deal with that. And then the maintenance component is up to the City of East Wenatchee. So, with that, I'd entertain any questions for the agreement or about the project in general.
Which, which side are they going to start first?
From what we've heard so far, I don't have a final schedule, so I don't want to speak in absolutes, but what they've indicated is that they're going to start on the east side, and we are still on track for an April 1st start. So, lots of outreach to come within the next several weeks as we nail that down.
I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the City Administrator to execute the construction agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Wash Dot for improvements to be constructed within the state right-of-way as part of the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridges Project, City Project Number 2201.2.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson and seconded by Councilmember Uier for City Council to authorize the City Administrator to execute the construction agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Wash Dot for the improvement to be constructed within the state right-of-way as part of the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridges, Bridges Project, City Project Number 2201.2. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sewer collections. Hey, I was wondering why you're here today.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Adam Neely, I'm your Sewer and Stormwater Collection Supervisor, and I'm here to request approval for the contract for the emergency Holly Street stormwater replacement with J&amp;K Earthworks in the amount of $259,300 to replace the outfall pipe that was burned. So, they'll replace, which will begin Monday, will begin excavating to replace 120 feet of, of 72-inch pipe.
This the one that was burned a couple of weeks ago, then we had to do an emergency? And I can go through that just for a minute.
Yeah, so, we believe that a homeless person started a fire in, in the outfall, and it burned up completely. It was a, a steel reinforced polyethylene pipe for about 200 feet, and it incinerated itself. And so, yeah, the, the last part of, of this basin, which roughly captures water from McKittrick Street all the way to Horse Lake Road, all comes out in the, right by the PUD laydown yard. And so, yeah, the, the last piece of pipe is not there anymore and actively collapsing at the moment. So, the sooner we can get this replaced, the better. We will protect storm.
We're going back with concrete this time?
We're going back with concrete, yep. We're going to put 72-inch concrete back in place of the polyethylene pipe. So, you know, it has its hurdles. It's a little heavier pipe, so we've got to put a larger machine in there. So, we're anticipating a few more days of construction due to that. We have to de-energize some of the transmission power lines that are underneath it, to be one. Hopefully, I think we have some great weather coming up next week though, so the timing is pretty good for the replacement.
Thank you, Adam. Thanks for just giving me a little bit more information. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Not a question. I just, I was thinking about this particular area the other day as it was raining a lot and the weather warming up, and just wondering how that was impacting this project and if it caused any more damage.
No, it didn't cause any more damage. Thankfully, the opening is large enough that it's still conveying water, but it is collapsing. And we had eyes on it every day that it did rain, just in case we did have to bypass pump.
Which I want, I want to say to Adam's credit, he had a bypass plan and pumps at a, on standby in the event that the outfall did collapse. So, I just want to give Adam that shout out. He was very proactive in this.
Thank you.
With that, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the contract for the Holly Street Stormwater Outfall Emergency Repair, City Project Number 2508 with J&amp;K Earthworks LLC in the amount of $259,300.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Uier and seconded by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve the contract for Haley, Holly Street Stormwater Outfall Emergency Repair, City Project Number 2508 with J&amp;K Earthworks LLC in the amount of $259,300. Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries.
Matter of procedure, Your Honor, we went to F and skipped E.
Yep.
That's where it got me confused too.
Got it. Well, I was wondering, that's why I was, okay, got it. But we approved that motion, so can we go back to E then? Okay. We didn't really hear about, oh, I see, they're both together. So, we could do a motion for E if someone wants to entertain a motion?
No.
We haven't heard about it yet.
Okay.
You can go back to it, but he says in his question.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So, we go back to E?
Charlie, is this myself again? Okay, so, thank you. So, this next motion will be to, to approve another partner in our regional de-camp facility, the City of Leavenworth, for a facility use agreement. And as you may know, we have now, if we take on Leavenworth, we'll have six regional partners that utilize the de-camp facility. So, what we do there, if you don't know, is process street sweepings and storm system waste primarily. So, we dry that material out, and then it's sent to, to the waste management. For example, last year, we processed about 2,400 tons of material.
Prop you out, Malaga?
Yeah. Uh, no, not Malaga, just 1745 South Wenatchee Avenue.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah. So, they'll end up bringing their street waste and stormwater waste here for process, and then, and then waste management disposes it out in the landfill.
So, do we get money?
We get money.
Yeah. Is this, this, we're being good neighbors both? How's this work?
Yeah, so, for, it's a $2,400 fee per year, and then it costs about $190 per trip is, is the, the usage for each, each dump, we call it, yeah.
And we don't worry about, like, we won't be able to have our own, or is this a, how long of a agreement is this with them, or?
Per year, we, I, I believe we, we renew it every year.
Every year, okay, thanks. Thank you, Adam.
Any questions beyond that?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the Wenatchee Valley Regional De-Camp Facility Use Agreement with City of Leavenworth and authorize the City Administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Uier and seconded by Councilmember Hornby for City Council to approve the Wenatchee Valley Regional De-Camp Facility Use Agreement with the City of Leavenworth and authorize the City Administrator's signature. Any comments or discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right. It's hard to get confused when Brad's up here.
Perfect. Well, then I'll keep it complicated. I'm Brad Posey-Jack, Finance Director. Tonight, I've got a resolution for you for an interfund ability to do additional interfund loans. I probably should have had a slideshow, but I might end up using my hands a lot. So, we've got the general fund, and it's one of, it's our largest fund that we've got. It's our primary operating fund. And then we have over 30 other smaller funds. And some of these smaller funds are grant reimbursement-based funds, and where they have to have their expenses first, and then they submit for reimbursement, and then get a reimbursement back, maybe a month or two months later. In the meantime, they may not have enough cash in those smaller funds to be able to cash flow that process. So, what we do in the Finance Department, and we've got policies that allow us to do this, we take some of the general fund money, and we kind of backfill so that fund can cash flow. And so, per our policies, the Finance Department's kind of allowed to do, move, move some of that cash around for those instances. Well, we have one very large project, the Apple Capital Loop Project, also known as the Infra Grant, that it is going to take more cash flow timing than what the general fund has available. And so, our policies, because they kind of make sure that we are following specific rules, our policies don't just automatically allow the Finance Department to be able to move other funds from all those other smaller funds, move their cash around as well. So, this resolution is basically just for this specific project is giving the Finance Department the ability to move other cash balances around to be able to cash flow, because there may be times where we have four or $5 million payments that we have to make each month, and then if you've got a month or month and a half of leg before you get reimbursed, we could be up towards, hopefully, more like 12 million at any one time. But the resolution calls for 15 million so that we can handle, we can handle those months, when we may have a few months that are larger months. Because I know, looking at the schedule going into the future for the Apple Capital Loop projects, there will be months where we're four or $5 million each month, and we actually already saw that back in January. And so, we're just trying to line things up so we can cross our Ts and dot the Is on our policies. And, because the state and the city has very restrictive policies on what we can do with all those other little funds and how we manage the cash.
And this was brought to Finance today?
Yep. We discussed this at Finance in maybe a little more detail.
So, Brad, this also helps keep the project moving. We don't have to pause or wait until we get reimbursed, so it keeps it.
And, and it's much more cost-effective for the city, since we do have that cash. And even though it's spread across many funds, it's much more cost-effective for us to be able to borrow from ourselves than have to go out to a bank and borrow cash flow from a bank, because our interest rates will be higher than, yes, we're going to forego some interest in some of those other funds, but it will be cheaper than, it'll be cheaper than going out and having to pay higher interest rates.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve for City Council to adopt Resolution 2025-08 authorizing the treasurer of the city to loan and transfer money from various city funds to its Apple, Apple Capital Loop Projects Fund and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Navarro Gomez and seconded by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to adopt Resolution 2025-08 authorizing the treasurer of the city to loan and transfer money from the various city funds to its Apple Capital Loop Project Fund and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Any other discussion or comments? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. Chief?
Evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Edgar Reinfield, Chief of Police for Wenatchee Police Department. The motion I have for you tonight is for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign a data hosting agreement. It's a lot of complicated to basically say that as a separate organization, Rivercom actually houses data for a number of entities, five in fact behind themselves, the four, two police departments, the two sheriff's offices, and the jail. Where it gets complicated is with public disclosure in particular. There is data that we own in that server that is exclusively ours, and therefore, we are exclusively, exclusively responsible as the custodian of records to disclose that information when possible or when required by law. With this, this data hosting agreement outlines what pieces of data belong to which entity and therefore who is responsible for it. The agreement is not just with the City of Wenatchee. It needs to be entered into with all of these other entities so that this all works and we all comply with law in a way that's effective, pretty straightforward, and hopefully more efficient than what we've been doing, which is often having phone calls that go back and forth for a couple of days trying to figure out who's responsible for a piece of information. Gladly try to answer any questions. I will do my best, but it's been a complicated agreement that's been through the city attorney, it's been through other legal representation for the other local entities trying to sort out just how we make this right so that we all stay in compliance with law.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation agreement with Rivercom data hosting.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osteen and seconded by Councilmember Uier for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperative agreement regarding Rivercom data hosting. Any other comments or discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Oh, we're going to do a couple of reports, and then hopefully you get, go into executive session. So, I'll be quick. Confluence Parkway Phase One groundbreaking, Zach will be there, April 17th at 1:30, along with many other people and most, and all the city council maybe. So, and then we'll get more information on the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridge Project when we do a groundbreaking there, correct? We did do Commerce. Thanks for the chamber for hosting it with Mayor, shout out to Mayor Crawford, and I thought that was, went well. And that's all I have. So, if we can just go around and do our announcements, that'd be great.
Okay. Um, I attended City Action Days last week. It was pretty exciting. Lots of things going on, lots of priorities. There was, they gave us a list of bills that they were supporting and that we were watching to see if they were going to pass or not. The one that really surprised me was the Senate passed the bill to, what it does is enables a developer to build, like, multifamily units, just as an example, without having to worry about parking. So, they, normally, I think you have to have one parking place per unit. Well, you don't have to, which is kind of scary, because parking, we were discussing this earlier today, parking is a problem. Anyway, I was really surprised. Anyway, I was really surprised that one passed, but it did, it went through the senate. Um Wednesday night after the sessions, I attended a dinner that was put on by the city of Monroe for the twelfth legislative district. Um Senator Gaynor and um uh Representative Brian Burnett were there, I was able to discuss with them some things, matter of fact, I sat at dinner with Senator Gaynor. Lots of very busy over there right now, it was a lot of fun, I learned a lot and I really enjoyed it. I love that kind of stuff. Um our Columbia River Housing Task Force meeting has been moved to April uh because they're working on getting some contract verbiage just straightened out and they thought they would wait. And I understand Mayor Poyer that you're going to come and speak along with Mayor Crawford.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we're excited. That's all I have.
That was a lot. Thanks for representing us.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Well, you forgot one very big important one. Polar plunge.
Oh, that's right.
I went to polar plunge. And I'm very glad I was not one of the ones that got in the water, but kudos to those that did. The city penguins showed up, they waddled Elizabeth with her waddle, that was just fantastic, it was so fun. What a great event, that's the first time I'd experienced it, it was really wonderful, so kudos to you guys that were brave enough to go in the icy water.
Over twenty thousand raised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great, really successful.
It's all kind of, I guess law kind of puts it on or sponsor it every year and yeah.
Yeah, it was really fantastic, so I was happy to be there.
Perfect.
Chamber's trying to organize with the WDA a business liaison and so they can understand the permitting process, building those kind of things, I'm excited to hear how they come come up with to um help business grow in the in in the all of the city of Wenatchee, so that's kind of cool. Also the WDA dinner tomorrow night, so hope to see all of you there. And that's all I have right now.
Great. A couple of meetings, uh my second museum board meeting and we're continuing to make some efforts to have greater understanding between the city and the museum. And uh Shalane Douglas' housing. The task force that's working on a five-year strategic plan met and we're making progress on that, Glenn's had some good input representing the city, so it's been appreciated. And we're still formulating and Myra's helping out too on this junior city council, so we'll keep you posted on, appreciate all your interest and support on that, so.
Yeah, I know council member Navarro Gomez is kind of getting thrown in some things and things for, you're you're actually volunteering, so thank you for just like going going for it. And I know you have some meetings set up here shortly with each head department, so.
Yep, so and I think for me, the only other thing to report, I attended the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce event right after um my s- being sworn in and it was just really positive experience, able to see the great work that Hispanic Chamber is promoting. They're promoting uh the local businesses up in the upper Pingborn areas, you guys know they've got all those rental units that are trying to get out to any new business owners that are looking for some cheap local uh spaces. I'm excited to attend a Special Olympics tomorrow, both um with my city council hat and as a volunteer with our youth ministry group and just excited to jump on and learn from all of you and keep growing uh to do the best that we can, thank you.
Thank you. What do we need, time like thirty minutes? Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. Who do you want to read?
Oh, um whoever wants to.
Okay, I'll do it. Uh your honor, I'll make a motion to for uh council to move into executive session to discuss with legal counsel representing the ci- city litigation or potential litigation to which the city is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the city. RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-one-zero, one aye, um not exceeding thirty minutes.
Second.
No action to be taken. We have a motion by council member uh Hornby to meet in executive session for a period not to exceed thirty minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potent potential litigation to which the city is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequences to the city, RCW forty-two point three zero point one-one-zero, one aye. Council member O'Shea second the motion and there is expected no action at the conclusion. Any comments? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries.
The council needs fifteen more minutes in executive session.
Okay.
The council needs five more minutes in executive session.
And it's all wound up up here.
Yeah.
Oh, we're on? Oh. We got one more, one more minute. All right, we're back from executive session and our attorney's favorite part. Here we go. A motion to adjourn, maybe?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Uver and second by Councilmember Quevis to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.